Good evening. We will call our planning commission meeting for September eighth to order.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll call the roll. Shane Banks.
Present.
Mariah Bishop.
Present.
Ralph Carson.
Present.
Philip Jefferson.
Here.
Jihen Hodges.
Here.
Ben Mills.
Here.
Michael Boyland.
Here.
That's seven members present.
Great, thank you so much. Our invocation, Mr. Carson.
Our heavenly father, we come to you this evening in thanks. Thank you for the great town of Garner we live in, the great state of North Carolina, in the United States of America. Please guide us in our thoughtful and thorough deliberations this evening. We make what we feel is the best decisions for the town of Garner. To keep it on its current growth trajectory. And on a personal note, thank you for my mother's successful surgery today. Yes, these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you so much. It is now time for the adoption of our agenda. Are there any items that we need to adjust? Seeing none, and we have a motion to approve our agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you so much, Mr. Boyland. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Carson, we have a motion and a second.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda. I'll call the vote. Shane Banks.
Yes.
Mariah Bishop.
Aye.
Ralph Carson.
Aye.
Philip Jefferson.
Aye.
Jihen Hodges.
Aye.
Ben Mills.
Aye.
Michael Boyland.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the agenda is adopted.
Thank you so much. We've adopted our agenda. Our meeting minutes are also before you from our August eleventh meeting. Are there any items that need to be adjusted or revised? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve our meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes of August twelfth.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carson.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you so much.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. I'll call the vote. Mr. Banks.
Aye.
Ms. Bishop.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson.
Aye.
Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Boyland.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the minutes are approved.
Thank you so much for approving our meeting minutes. We will now move on to our old and new business. CZMP two four zero zero five.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Erin Joseph, and I will present the staff report for this evening for the rezoning case before you this evening. This case CZMP twenty four dash zero zero five, also known as Arden subdivision, is a tier two conditional rezoning request. The applicant Sarah Van Evere of McAdams Group has submitted their request on behalf of the property owners to rezone approximately fifty four point four acres from residential agricultural to residential four conditional for the development of one hundred thirty six single family detached units. This site is within the town's ETJ, and it's generally located on the northeast corner of Ten Ten Road and Old Stage Road. As stated, the zoning, existing zoning is rural agricultural. That zoning district is primarily intended for rural residential development as well as agricultural and civil cultural uses. Typically found outside of the town's corporate limits where water and sewer services are not readily available. And currently, the site is predominantly vacant. You do have some single family homes that front on Ten Ten Road. And the surrounding zoning districts consists of a mix of R two, R four conditional, as well as RA. The site does not fall within a activity center or framework. However, you do have a neighborhood activity center to the northwest at Fayetteville Road or US Highway four oh one. You also have a community activity center right at Ten Ten and Old Stage Road. This area of the community consists of a mixture of single family neighborhoods, of vacant tracks, and a few local businesses in the surrounding area. And Ten Ten Road is a two lane arterial road that connects the southern end of town from NC fifty to US Highway four oh one. The proposed district residential four, the applicant has narrowed the potential uses to one out of a possible fourteen, which would be single family detached. They are requesting one hundred thirty six single family detached lots with a lot dimension at fifty three feet in width and one hundred twenty feet in depth. They have conditioned the side interior setback at six feet and the side interior setback for a corner lot as ten feet. The applicant has also proffered conditions that address site design, architectural standards, as well as open space and recreational amenities. Pertaining to site design, a maximum density of two point five dwelling units per acre. There's pedestrian connectivity and also road frontage improvements. Now, this condition has been revised to reflect the pending development agreement with the town. Architectural standards, there's a minimum home living area square footage at twenty four hundred square feet. Specific building materials, size of porches, as well as window and garage features. Also, floor plans have the option of a first floor primary bedroom. The amenities for the open space include a playground, a dog park, and pickleball courts, as well as trails, a minimum of six foot paved trails. On the screen, you have the concept plan or master plan. I'll point out a few areas of note on the master plan. So you do have access points, the main access point from Ten Ten Road. You also have an access point through the Eagle Ridge subdivision at Seastone. And also a one way connection at the existing Hurst Drive. There's one stormwater control measure proposed for the site, just adjacent to the main amenity area. There are also other open space areas as well. You have open space area here. The mailbox kiosk and the paved trails that traverse the site. This site is within the watershed protection area, so it is subject to water quality. That's nitrogen as well as total suspended solids, as well as quantity of requirements for the one, ten, and twenty five year storm events. And to address these storm water, storm events, one stormwater control measure is proposed. From utilities will be served by the city of Raleigh, and water will connect from an existing twelve inch line from Ten Ten Road. And the sewer will connect from an eight inch existing line from the Eagles Ridge subdivision. A traffic impact analysis was conducted in October of twenty twenty four. It was updated in July of this year to reflect the Hurst Drive connection. But the results of that TIA anticipates to generate one thousand three hundred and forty trips on the average weekday. During the peak hour, trips are expected at twenty five trips in and seventy four trips out. During PM peak hour, it's anticipated to have eighty four trips in and forty nine trips out. You'll see the figure on the screen shows the future build outline configuration with NC DOT's recommended right and left turn lanes from Ten Ten Road. You'll see the right dedicated right turn lane with fifty feet of storage. And then you have the left dedicated turn lane with fifty feet of storage. Also, you'll note that there is a proposed signal at Seastone and Old Stage Road. This signal will be installed by another entity. However, the developer has agreed to contribute fifteen percent of the cost of that installation. Now, during the public hearing, more information was requested concerning the Hurst Drive connection and more broadly, the town's standards for coordinating with existing streets. And so to summarize that information from why that Hurst Drive is necessary. Number one, street stubs are designed for future connectivity, so they are not intended for permanent dead ends. Also, connections improve neighborhood accessibility and supports emergency services as well as delivery services. The connection with the existing Hurst Drive, you see here in north on your screen, there's an existing cul-de-sac there. And then the connection, in order to limit through traffic into the existing Whitecroft Manor subdivision, a traffic from Hurst Drive would enter into the proposed Arden subdivision, but would not be able to enter it, so it would be a one way connection from Hurst Drive into the proposed subdivision. Also, the existing Hurst Drive is a nonconforming street. The length of the street exceeds the maximum lengths for both a temporary dead end and also a permanent dead end for the UDO standards. And not only the UDO standards are the street lengths in excess, Hurst Drive is over twelve hundred feet in length. The existing cul-de-sac is undersized per the fire code. The current bulb is sixty eight point nine four feet in diameter. The minimum required for a fire code is ninety six feet in diameter. And so when there is a newly proposed subdivision, it is the responsibility of that new proposed subdivision to correct those nonconformities. There were no significant environmental or cultural features of note at the site. Again, the site is within the Lower Swift Creek management area. So the site is limited to a maximum of seventy percent impervious surface when the stormwater control measure retains the first inch of rainfall. The applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings with adjacent property owners and occupants. The first meeting was held last year in July, and the second meeting was held this year in May. There were thirteen attendees at the first meeting and seventeen at the second meeting. Just to review the framework for the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, the site is not within an activity center. It is within the neighborhood's area character typology, and the development intensity is a level two area to strengthen. Staff's analysis of the proposal with the comprehensive land use plan, there were fifteen growth framework criteria that were evaluated. Thirteen received a strong support. One was a modest non-support and one strong non-support. The modest support was given due to the lack of road frontage improvements and the existing transportation on Ten Ten Road. Didn't receive the strongest because that is an existing condition. And one not strong non-support was given due to the small lot, single family detached home, the form does not match the small lot under ten thousand square feet, roughly a quarter acre lot for the home type that the comprehensive plan identifies. With the land use and community character consistency, twenty eight criteria were determined applicable or possible to address, meaningfully address. And in summary, the use of open space to create a strong central focal point to the neighborhood and connectivity of the internal trail network is a strength of the plan that speaks directly to the comprehensive plan. However, a strong non-support rating was given to the lack of diversity in housing types and to the lack of a commitment to green street solutions. Overall, the proposed development has strengths, but greater home options, improved access management for the corridor, and incorporating green street solutions could improve consistency. We do have the full detail attached to the staff report. The public hearing was held on August nineteenth. Some of the areas of concern addressed traffic and roadway connectivity and access. There were questions, clarifying questions, on what exactly an acceptable level of service for traffic means. And there is also concern expressed with the level of service F at Ten Ten Road and US Highway four oh one. There is a question about the turn lanes and whether NC DOT is involved with installing those turn lanes and also the timing of the installation of the traffic signal at Seastone and Old Stage. There was a question about the Hurst Drive roundabout direction and town street standards regarding that connection and why it's there. There was a question about street lighting, again, site access points, and also what was the feedback from the community in the Eagles Ridge subdivision. Citizens from the Whitecroft Manor subdivision expressed concerns again about that Hurst Drive connection. And there was a request for clarification or further evaluation pertaining to the UDO standards for connectivity. There was a request to attenuate for the one hundred year storm and not just the one, ten, and twenty five. Appreciation was given for the selection of the zoning district of R four versus the R eight district. But there was also concerns about the proximity to the Vance Elementary School and the challenge of acquiring future right of way for road frontage improvements. So staff has drafted a consistency statement for your review. It's in your staff report. Highlighted on the screen is the results of staff's analysis. It's consistent and recommend approval. And there is also a draft motion for your consideration to recommend approval. And the next steps this evening would be for planning commission to determine findings of plan consistency and to make a recommendation to council whether to recommend approval or denial of this case. And back to town council for findings of reasonableness and ultimately a decision to approve or deny the case. And so that concludes my presentation. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for you all this evening, and we are both here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Joseph. At this time, are there any questions for staff at the moment?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Boyland.
You mentioned that it's not in a activity center.
Yes.
But I think you'll admit it's very close to a mixed activity center according to the new plan, correct?
Correct. It is very close to the Ten Ten and Old Stage Road Activity Center, which is just the intersection, just at, just down the road from, from the site.
Did we not discuss in formulating the newest long range plan how this entire area from Ten Ten all the way down to five forty is going to be an area of development interest? Did we not do that?
In this current plan?
The new plan.
I'm not aware of any new plans. I'm not sure if I understand the question correctly. If there's another plan that's outside of our current Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan that has discussed the development?
The twenty twenty four Garner Forward Plan. I thought we discussed this corridor, if you will, as an area that will have a lot of growth and interest because of the five forty.
I don't believe this is one of the areas that were identified. There is a section in, in the comp plan that has sort of hotspots. That area for, close to the five forty was closer to the Benson Road, five forty interchange.
And primarily, the, the, the land south of Ten Ten, between Ten Ten and five forty has some different intensity on some of the Garner Forward future land use maps. But this corner is not included in that, to kind of piggyback off what Erin has said.
So they're, I'm trying to understand the ingress egress. So there's one main entrance, would be one main entrance off of Ten Ten for this development.
Correct.
And then kind of a secondary off to Seastone, which is part of the Eagle Ridge community, which would ultimately take cars out to Old Stage also.
Yes.
And then there would be an ingress only from Hurst Drive, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. There are, on the maps, there are two, I don't know what you want to call them, dead ends or stubs? Is that, they will remain as that, or three actually?
So the, if you're referring to this stub here and this stub here, they, are those the two that you're referring to?
Well, yeah, three actually. Are they just going to be dead ends?
Temporary. If any development changes for those adjacent properties, then those, those stubs would, will ultimately connect to any proposed development on, from those properties. But right now, there are no development plans for those properties, so they can remain as temporary dead ends.
Maybe this is a question for the developer, I don't know, but were any of the properties on Ten Ten approached about selling and becoming part of this?
I don't want to speak for the applicant, so I'll let them answer that question. I believe they have, but I don't want to make any assertion about those conversations.
Yeah. The reason why I ask was just looking at it, it seems as if this development is, is kind of squeezed in between a whole bunch of private property and subdivisions all around it with one access point, main access point. I also have a question about some of the numbers. I'm not, my, my wife will tell you I'm not good at math, but it talks about a minimum of fifty three by a hundred and twenty sized lot, foot sized lots. And that comes out to over six thousand square feet per lot. Yet during the meetings, they were, the people in the neighborhood were told that the lots would be two thousand to four thousand square feet. So I'm just kind of confused.
I'll also let the applicant speak to, you know, their changes throughout the, the process. They may have had different lot sizes, different intentions. Plans oftentimes, when they have their first neighborhood meeting, can change significantly from the second neighborhood meeting. And so that could have been a factor, but.
I didn't see that figure changed between the two meetings. That's why I'm asking the question. But we can ask the developer during their presentation, that's right. Okay. I'm done, Philip, for the moment.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Erin, do we have an idea of how these lot sizes in this proposed neighborhood compare to Eagle Ridge and Whitecroft Manor in terms of lot sizes?
Yes, the, I know the Eagle Ridge lots are slightly bigger than these, these proposed lots within the subdivision. Oh, Jeff was saying, just not by a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's different, there's different sections of Eagle Ridge, so there's a variety of lot sizes. So I actually think they're, they're comparable to some, and then of course, it just depends on what section.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ms. Joseph, I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Joseph, I have a couple of questions. So the two dead-end streets, to be south and west, are they going to have temporary turnarounds on it for emergency vehicles? Because there's, looking at the surrounding properties, it doesn't look like anything is going to be developed there in the near future. Possibly quite some time, so I'm just curious why there's no turnarounds. Is it just the length of the stub that's requiring?
Correct. If the street length determines if there is a temporary turnaround, whether it's a cul-de-sac or a T or hammerhead turnaround, so any street length that's greater than 150 feet in length would require that emergency turnaround.
Good. I'll hold my other questions until the developer speaks. Thank you.
All right.
I'll just have one. Has the town, I know there's a nearby STIP project, DOT project at the intersection of Old Stage and 1010. Does the town make the state aware of this potential project, so they could try to tie in any type of design or anything like that?
I'm not sure. I know NC DOT, of course, they review the traffic impact analysis, but any direct conversation? I don't know if I can.
No, I don't think there's been any direct conversation, but like she said, the TIA scoped through the district office, and they kind of managed the connection between, you know, the highway, you know, between the folks that are doing development and then the STIP projects themselves.
Okay. I know that.
So they'd be aware of it, but.
Yeah, I think that project has been ongoing for a while, so they probably want to picked up. I don't know how long this has been at work, so I don't know if they would have picked this up, I guess. I guess on DOT's side, but I'm sure the developer had plans for DOT's widening and intersection improvement.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? I guess you're ready to hear from the applicant.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Joseph. Please state your name, your address, and your affiliation for our record, though.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, 434 Fayetteville Street, Suite 2200, Raleigh, North Carolina 27601. Here on behalf of the applicant and Mungo Holmes, who's the proposed developer of this site, joining me this evening from Adams Company, who is providing planning and engineering for this project, are Sarah Van Everian and Nick Williamson. And so if you've got detailed plan questions, I'll probably defer to them because they're the experts, and the land use attorney certainly is not. And then additionally, Tyler Blang from Exalt Engineering. They have performed the traffic study that is before you all tonight that has been reviewed by DOT that you've touched on briefly. Tyler's going to come up and talk a little bit about the traffic study that's in the analysis that's been performed, and then can answer any questions related to that. And I'm going to see, make sure this is working. Thank you. So we have a presentation. Before I get into it, I do want to touch on one question, Mr. Boland, that you had relative to the properties, and were the property owners up along 1010 approached about possibly selling? As it turns out, the configuration of this site is actually portions of property that run all the way up to 1010. This is property that's been in this family for generations, and a number of the members of the family have gotten together and have decided to sell part of their property, but not all of their property. And so what you see is essentially a lot of property that they no longer want to own, they no longer want to maintain, they don't want to move. There are some cemeteries, some, you know, kind of sacred portions of the property that are between the development site and 1010 Road that they want to be able to maintain and retain. But the portion that you see is actually a reflection of people who currently live along 1010, who have decided that they're not ready to move, but they don't want to continue to own and maintain all of the land that they own.
Gotcha.
Yep. And I'll touch briefly on the zoning. Erin's done a great job. The staff report does a great job of talking about the existing zoning, the proposed zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan. We're requesting R4 with conditions associated with setbacks and lot size, and I'll talk, Mr. Boland, about the lot size question that you had in just a moment. The future land use map recommendations, as is touched on in the staff report, have, you know, it's designated the neighborhoods, it's a lever-two area to strengthen, Tier Two, 2R infill investment area, and it's adjacent to a community activity center, as was noted, and we've got kind of a comprehensive map that shows this a little bit better. As you can see, we've got the Arden, the development kind of inset adjacent to that community center, community activity center that's located at 1010 and Old Stage. You can see the Regional Employment Center at 540 and Old Stage. Additionally, to the west of the site, if you move down 1010 Road and out to 401, obviously, you've got a community activity center there, which is where the Costco is, and then you've got a neighborhood activity center to the north of the site. The concept plan, I want to talk a little bit about some of the features that have been incorporated into this concept plan. As was mentioned, and as is noted in the staff report, this is for approximately two and a half dwelling units per acre. It's exclusively single-family detached. The benefit that my client had when they got into this project was, and you all, I don't believe, saw this application before, but there was a previous zoning proposal that was made for this site a couple of years ago. That zoning proposal ended up not moving forward after the public hearing, as I understand it. The good news was, is that we had the benefit, my client had the benefit of hearing the feedback that the council had at that time relative to things like density, traffic, connectivity of Hearst, as well as setbacks between the units. And so the application that you see before you tonight had the benefit of hearing feedback from another proposal, another developer, and so we were able to incorporate those comments that we heard prior to us making this application. We've been working closely with the town staff. The town has been great, as they always are, the staff is, in working together to really come up with a plan that we believe not only is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it has the right density, it's, you know, kind of homogeneous with the built environment that is already there, but it's going to be the type of high-quality development that Town of Garner really wants to see in these communities. As you're probably familiar, Mungo Holmes has developed a number of developments in Garner, most recently George's Landing, which has been a great success for them. And the product type that you will be seeing in this community, assuming we're successful with this rezoning, is kind of the largest product that they have in George's Landing. That's the vision behind this. And again, it's designed to make sure that the product that's being put here is, generally speaking, complementary to Eagle Ridge. The community 2R East, Whitestone Manor, that's a county subdivision, and so those lots are much, much larger, and so no surprise there that the lots we're proposing are smaller than those because we are not a county subdivision. But from an overall lot size standpoint in our community, we believe that the lots are highly consistent with and complementary to what has been developed at Eagle Ridge. A couple of things that I do want to point out. Hurst Drive, there was a lot of discussion at the previous zoning hearing for the prior application back in 2022. We worked closely with the staff on what were the options. UDO requires a connection. There is no doubt about it, and we've been crystal clear with the community that unfortunately, and I say unfortunately because we don't need the access. Given the number of units that we have, we don't need a third point of access, but the UDO certainly requires this connection, and so that's what we are showing. However, thoughtful creativity on behalf of the staff, as well as my client, has come up with this modified design, which is essentially, as you know, Mr. Boland, is an ingress into our site and not an egress from the site. You know, as a county subdivision, there's not a whole lot of maintenance that's going on at the state level of the roads in Whitestone Manor. We've had that conversation with those folks. I'm certainly sympathetic to it. I lived in that situation for several years, and certainly, we wouldn't want to. My client doesn't want to be in a situation where we're pouring a lot of our traffic into their community. This one-way-in option allows us to be able to develop the community, to provide a connection that's consistent with the UDO. It gives those folks another way out. It gives those folks another way to 1010 Road, but our traffic won't be going into their community. Another aspect of this case that may not be abundantly clear, we have had conversations with the folks in Eagle Ridge relative to a number of things, not only the Seastone intersection at Old Stage and the future signalization of that, which you'll hear from Mr. Blang momentarily on, but also the connectivity between the two developments. And there was a member of Eagle Ridge who attended the public hearing. He didn't speak, but he approached us after the public hearing concerned about construction traffic, and we have added a condition to the case that essentially prohibits construction traffic from using Eagle Ridge until we get to the 90th CO. And I say prohibits construction. What we have included in there is basically a barrier is going to be put up as development occurs in our community. A barrier is going to be put up at that connection, and when we hit the 90th CO, that's when that barrier comes down. The idea is that the vast majority of the development activity, certainly for streets, sewer, infrastructure, and things of those nature, will occur prior to that 90th CO, and it will significantly limit the amount of construction traffic that will be using Seastone to access our site for development. Just a little bit more information on, in proximity to the services, and you can see Arden is kind of pinpointed at the bottom there. These are just things that my client uses as they're informing their future buyers about what's in the area, and again, real close to the site is Costco, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A. A lot of services are not far from the site. They're certainly a drive, but not far from the site. And we have a multitude of zoning conditions. I won't run through all of them. They're identified in your staff report. I think the highlights are, and I'm going to talk a little bit, I'm going to invite Mr. Blang up momentarily to talk about the traffic side of the equation, and then I'm going to come back up, talk a little bit about open space, and address some of the other questions that you all had. But I think the highlight is, this is a robust set of conditions that's been developed really over the course of a year in working with the town staff, working closely to ensure that the open spaces are strong, the walkability is very, very strong. There's sidewalks and paths throughout the community, as you can see on the concept plan, if I go back here, there's this kind of primary open space in the center of the site. We've got trails kind of weaving their way in and out of the site. A couple of things on the future connections, as I mentioned, between the site that we're developing and 1010 Road, our sellers are going to continue to live there. It's not really related to the zoning, but I think it's an important part to note that those sellers demanded that this be a single-family detached community, because they're going to be living next to it. They're going to be the folks who are going to be most impacted by this site, and so they were picky about who was going to be the builder and picky about the style of development going on. With respect to the stubs that we're going to have, those are really just setting up for future development. We don't know when that's going to occur. We don't know when our current sellers are going to decide that it's time to sell the remainder of their property, but we're setting those sites up for future development that we believe will be consistent with what we are doing here. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Blang to come up and talk about traffic, and then I will be right back up to talk open space and answer the rest of the questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Tyler Blang with Exalt Engineering. We're located at 203 West Millbrook Road, Suite 200, Raleigh, North Carolina 27609. Exalt Engineering performed the traffic impact analysis for this development. The original TIA was submitted in October of 2024. That TIA was fully reviewed by North Carolina DOT, and they agreed with all of our results and recommendations from the TIA. Just to touch on some of those improvements, we have an eastbound and westbound turn lane into the site driveway along 1010 Road. At the intersection of Old Stage Road and 1010 Road, this kind of goes back to the TIP project that was mentioned previously. There is a separate NC DOT project going in at that intersection, and that includes an eastbound right turn lane and a northbound right turn lane. So those are improvements to be made through a separate DOT project. Also, at the intersection of Seastone Street and Old Stage Road, there is a signal going in at that intersection. Originally, the developer agreed to contributing 15% to that signal. However, after some coordination with NC DOT, they informed us that a signal is already being put in place at that intersection, and it's to be put in place by the end of this year. So that signal will as well be put in by a separate NC DOT project. A revised traffic impact analysis was submitted in July of this year. The revision to that TIA was the Hurst Drive Connection, which was talked about previously. Vehicles will be able to enter the development from Hurst Drive, but will not be able to exit out onto Hurst Drive. That TIA is currently still under review by NC DOT. However, all of our results and recommendations were very similar to the previous TIA. The recommended improvements do mitigate the impact of the proposed site. At all of these signalized intersections, they are projected to operate at an acceptable level of service, which is a Level of Service D or better is considered acceptable. And all of the delay impacts at the unsignalized intersections are within the allowable limits or operate acceptably. Going to the next slide here. So this kind of touches on some of the level of service and delay numbers. Again, level of service isn't necessarily like a school grade where you need to get an A for it to be acceptable. In fact, sometimes an A means an intersection can be too built out. Level of Service D is considered acceptable in transportation engineering. So this table here shows all five of our study intersections, and it compares the level of service and delay in the no-build AM compared to the build-out AM with improvements, as well as the no-build PM and the build-out PM with improvements. So if you look at the build-out AM with improvements column, you can see that all of the intersections there operate with an acceptable level of service, which is D or better. Same thing with the build-out PM with improvements. The only exception to that is intersection two, Old Stage Road at Whitecroft Drive. But in the no-build PM, the no-build model, it will be operating at a level of service E. So in the builder with improvements, it still operates at a level of service E, so we did not worsen the level of service there. And then if you look at intersection four at the elementary school bus loop, it goes from a C to a D. However, if you look at the delay numbers, the delay only decreased by 1.4 seconds, so it's within the allowable limits of delay and still considered an acceptable level of service at Level of Service D. There were some previous questions, comments about queuing on 1010 Road and how it might affect the bus loop driveway. So we did look into that from a traffic perspective. In our synchro no-build model, the average queue during the peak hour was 553 feet, and the build-out model average queue during the peak hour was 564 feet. So that's a queue impact of 11-foot difference from the no-build to the build-out. The 95th percentile queue, we also looked at that, which means only 5% of the time will the queue be at that length of queuing. And during the no-build model, the 95% queue length for the peak hour was 775 feet, and the build-out 95% queue for the peak hour was 788 feet. So a 13-foot difference for the 95% queue. Both of those differences are less than one car length, 11 feet and 13 feet, so no huge impact to queuing along 1010 Road from this development. Next slide here. There was also some conversations about the bus driveway, the loop at the elementary school, and we looked into that as well. Overall, the queuing on 1010 Road was not a result of the amount of traffic using the bus loop driveway, and buses never queued in that driveway and queued out onto 1010 Road. That didn't happen in our models. During the AM peak period, there were at most three buses queued at one given time in the internal loop, and there was only one instance where a westbound vehicle or bus waited for a gap in opposing traffic to turn left into the bus loop driveway. During the PM peak period, there were at most two buses queued in the internal loop at any given time, and there were five instances where a westbound vehicle or bus waited for a gap in opposing traffic. If you look at the picture in the top right corner, that is one of the instances where a westbound bus had to wait to turn to the bus loop driveway because a bus exiting the bus loop was kind of situated over a little too far and prevented the other bus from turning in. So that was one of the instances where the bus had to wait for that bus to exit. There was also one eastbound bus from another school shown in the picture in the bottom there. They pulled up at the bus loop and dropped some kids off at that loop there, and they were stopped for about 14 seconds, and then it continued along 1010 Road. Lastly, we looked at some estimated emergency response travel times. This was brought up at a previous meeting as well, and it kind of compares the difference, just estimated difference in time for emergency response vehicles from the Caddy Road Public Safety Building over off US 401 and their travel time from taking US 401 to 1010 Road to get to different points around this development. development. The first two rows in there compare the travel time to point number one that's on the development, the image there, and that's at the Canaskus Road connection. So if you look at the the first row in the table, it says to Canaskus Road via Old Stage Road. So if emergency response vehicles were to take 1010 Road all the way to Old Stage, take Old Stage north, turn left on Whitecroft and go into development there, by using our development instead, they could save about 1.54 minutes for standard travel time. And they could save about 1.23 minutes if we assume that emergency response vehicles can travel about 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. Was kind of an estimate number that we used for the emergency vehicle travel times. We also looked at going to Canaskus Road via the South Mountain Drive roadway, which is kind of off to the west. You can't see it in this image, but it connects up into the Eagle Ridge development. And they have a saving of about 1.43 minutes using standard speed limits and savings of 0.94 minutes going 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, the assumption for emergency response vehicles. We also looked at some other points. Point number two in the image is kind of like a break even point where if vehicles were to take Old Stage Road, or if they took the route through our development, that's kind of a point in the middle where they could go either way and the time difference is minimal. However, it does just provide an alternate route. Say if there's congestion or something happening at the Old Stage Road signal there, they're able to bypass the signal and cut through our our intersection to provide some connectivity and an alternate route there. We also looked at the Hurst Drive Connection where vehicles aren't going to be able to exit onto Hurst Drive. However, we made an exception in our estimates for emergency response vehicles. And there's also some travel time savings there as well. So overall, just provides some some alternate routes for emergency response vehicles and some connectivity and some possible time travel savings for emergency response situations. That's all I had for traffic. I'll be happy to answer any other traffic related questions at the at the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tyler. Just briefly, again, as I mentioned, open space program is something that's been a big part of the design of this site. As you can see on this screen, the UDO would require 5.44 acres. What's being provided is nearly four times the UDO requirement. One of the things that has been really honed in on as part of this planning process through coordination with the staff is really what are what are those open space areas? What are those common areas that are being provided in the community? And so the site commitments include a pickleball court, fenced in playground, shade structure, dog park, and private trails. And the proximity of the private trails to each of the individual homes, we believe, will be a big selling point, not only to you all, not only to the council, but also to the folks that will be living in this community. Just some examples, this is the architecture that we'll be seeing, and we're showing the six foot side setback. And the reason why we're doing that is at Georgia's Landing, it's the same style of unit, but they're a lot closer to each other. They're three feet apart. And one of the thing, one of the pieces of feedback that, as I mentioned before, that we had heard from the prior public hearing, one of the things that we had worked with staff on is increasing the the setback sizes. As you can see, kind of just comparing and contrasting how the view will be of the product type and the differences between what has been done at Georgia's Landing and what will be done here. And again, the product style, very, very similar, just set further apart from each other. And again, this is some more conceptual elevations associated with the style of home. And then a couple of things I do want to mention. First, with respect to 1010 Road, you don't see it very well on this particular screen, but the concept plan shows, and as was noted in the staff report, when we went to public hearing, we had a robust condition number seven, which talked about making improvements to the 1010 Road frontage. We included a lot of things in there, not only that we would make efforts to acquire, but then the town may exercise condemnation and all of these things. We've taken most of that out with the suggestion of the town attorney, reduced that to a development agreement that has been submitted to the town, and that's currently under review. But 1010 Road improvements essentially along the frontage of our site, for lack of a better way to put it. So from kind of east to west, as you see along the screen, are part of the overall kind of public good that we think is being provided here. So even though those portions of the property aren't being provided as part of the development itself, we'll be able to provide the 1010 Road improvements as part of the case. And then additionally, Mr. Boylan, you asked about the lot sizes. The lot sizes have not changed during this process. That 2,000, 2,400 square foot, that's the size of the homes. So if that's not clear in the notes, I apologize for that. But yeah, that's the size of the homes, not the size of the lots. Yes, sir. But again, so with that, we're here to answer any questions that you all may have. We believe this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We believe it's the type of development that Garner is looking forward to seeing. We think it's highly complimentary to what's around it. It will provide additional connectivity. As as Tyler noted, it will reduce some emergency response times for folks who live in Eagle Ridge, which we think is a net benefit to having that connectivity out to 1010 Road. And we we just think you're going to be real proud of it. And so with that, happy to answer any further questions that y'all may have. And as Tyler mentioned, he's here as well.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for applicant?
I'm going to hold most of my questions until perhaps some other people here speak. Just wanted to clarify the the lot size versus home size. In the neighborhood meeting, under item three, participants asked what size lots are anticipated. Response, approximately 2,000 to 4,000 square feet. That's lots. And going back to Mr. Boylan's comments about lot size was 53 by 120, I believe, which is 6,300 square feet. You're saying now that that references the homes, but that's not what these multiple pages repeat over and over again, referring to lot size.
And that's, that's an error. I apologize for that. That we were clear, I mean, we wouldn't be able to fit any homes really on a 2,000 square foot lot. And we certainly were clear about that, have been clear about that, about the style of the homes as part of this process. And I apologize for any confusion on that front that the neighborhood meeting report may have created, Mr. Carson.
Okay. That's all the questions I have at this time.
So you have, according to the map at least, you have some lots that are pretty much the same size. But then you have several lots, maybe a dozen or more that are much bigger than that.
Yes, sir. Just given the way the property lays out, the configuration of the site. Yes, sir. That's right.
Yeah, one more question. On the big map here.
Yes, sir.
It says 1010 Road shall be widened to half of the Garner major thoroughfare sections. Note contingent on offsite property owner approval. Explain that.
Yep. So we are working with the owners, and we're optimistic that we'll have options before this zoning process is done to acquire that right of way. As I mentioned, we have a development agreement that's been submitted to the town that essentially includes as a commitment that we will go do that. And if we're not able to secure it, then the town can exercise condemnation authority. But we are very optimistic that before this zoning case is concluded, that we will be able to resolve any, any concerns about that future right of way. Because we understand what a huge, what a huge item that is for the town and making sure that those improvements get accelerated as much as they can, recognizing that 1010 will be widened at some point, but we don't know when. So we are actively working on that, Mr. Boylan.
So the offsite property owners are in fact the same owners who are.
Yes, sir.
Developing this.
Yep.
Want to develop.
Yeah, the vast majority of them are. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'll piggyback on Mr. Boylan's question about that. So if that, if that is the case, is there, was there a reason why that isn't already agreed upon for that roadway expansion?
It's just something my client is is working on. When, when they went under contract to buy the, what you see before you as the bulk of the development, it didn't include that right of way. And so they're working on getting the right of way along 1010 resolved as well. It's just, it's going to be a separate agreement, I guess, is the, is the best way to put it.
So just to clarify also, the access point, the access off of 1010 Road, that is a right of way, or this is a part of the sale of that portion of property?
It's, it's part of the sale. That's being, that's being acquired.
Just the roadway.
Yep. And that's being built out to town standards, be dedicated to the town. And so ultimately, that'll be owned by the town as a town street because it's a public street.
I'm sure I have more questions, but.
We're not going anywhere.
Any other specific questions for the applicant at this point before we go to public?
Yeah, I had a question. Well, first, I guess for clarification, so the asterisk in the main amenity, that's where the park and everything will go?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And then the other question, so I see in the neighborhood notes, someone mentioned the 100 year stormwater, I guess, like treatment as far as that goes. Because I know right now it's looking at the 110 and 25 year storm events. Is there any way to include 100 year storm, just given how much the recent floods just in North Carolina, I guess?
Yep. So a couple of points on that. And we are, we are working to see if we have the ability to make the commitment to do the 100 year storm. The concern we have right now is it could result in significant retaining walls. And so we're looking at that. Right now, it's looking like the 50 year storm is more attainable than the 100 year storm, just given site engineering. I would note that from an impervious surface standpoint, you know, this is an area that the the stormwater regulations would allow up to 70% impervious surface. And given our current site design, we're closer to like 50. And so we think the combination of those two things, the the manner in which stormwater is being treated, as well as the fact that we're providing on our current design, far less impervious surface than would otherwise be permitted on the site, we think is going to be an effective way to manage stormwater to and from the site.
Yeah, my piggyback off that, I would, you know, I would double check with Eagle Ridge to see if they have the flooding issues of their golf course. Maybe they'll be willing to pay a little bit extra to help, because the site directly closes there, help out with that. That's just a thought. For, so I've, I've lived around here, commuted through here for probably eight years, and I just want to say I've seen traffic at some instances back up from Old Stage all the way back up to 401 and limiting traffic flow on 401 through here. Typically, I'll see traffic back up from Old Stage past Street B and also past the turn lane that was put in. So people coming into the neighborhood would have to kind of wait their turn just to get to the turn lane to go into Street B. The one thing I was looking at when I was looking at the STIP for the intersection improvement, and I believe they may even start construction here soon by the end of the year. Most of the issue of traffic is going eastbound on 1010. And it looks like we have enough dedication to do, you know, almost three lanes, I guess. So you could almost have two lanes going eastbound instead of having one of the lanes dedicated now and just crossed off, you know, not to be used once we hit full dedication. So of all the traffic issues, I think, you know, it would be better if we had two lanes going eastbound and also tying into the the STIP project. It looks like there's about a 500 foot gap between Street B and to where the STIP has the school, I guess, the right turn lane put in for the school. So just kind of connecting that, I think, you know, would be a huge help going through there. I know there may be a little bit of offset, so I don't know if DOT would be okay with that. But that's just kind of where I'm leaning at for the traffic issues going through here.
Gotcha. That's all, and that is not a question that's been raised to date, and that was the right of way width in that location, but that's something we'll take a look at.
Okay.
Other questions? One more?
One more question. Your existing sanitary sewer services, sewer service is eight inch diameter connecting over to Seastone Street. Has the capacity of the surrounding communities, along with this proposed new development, been studied and is, is eight inch going to be sufficient? Or will the current eight inch line take this additional capacity?
Gotcha. I'm going to ask Mr. Williamson, who's the project engineer, to answer that question.
Nick Williamson with McAdams Company, 2905 Redian Parkway Drive, Durham, North Carolina, This, this project site would not overwhelm a, an eight inch line on its own. But in order for us to get plan approval through the construction drawing process, we'll have to work with Raleigh Water to get a sewer permit. And if we do trigger any upsizing downstream, that'll be part of our construction drawings that we'll be required to do for the, for the permit, for, for development to happen.
So if the existing sanitary line on Seastone is eight inches and you're tying in another 134, 136 homes, that has not been determined yet. So you're asking for rezoning before they've actually done the study to see if it's going to work with the existing infrastructure?
The, our project site alone will not trigger an upsize to where we tie in at. The detail of the entire basin downstream, that detail hasn't been worked out yet, but generally speaking, you're, it's, it's probably closer to 500 or 600 units where you have to upsize an eight inch line. So with the, the demand that we're putting on the system, we'll, we'll be fine at the the exact tie in.
Okay. So you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, you're saying for your 134 homes, eight inch line is sufficient at the tie in point, but no study, no determination has been made if the existing infrastructure beyond that is that capacity, near capacity, if it can handle this additional input from another 134 homes? That has not been studied yet?
That's correct. But in order for us to get the ultimate approval to make the, you know, to build the 134 homes, we'll have to go through the construction drawing permit process. And if it's determined that we would trigger an up sizing, then we would, we would do the up sizing in order for, for, for getting the permit.
So if, so if Seastone was determined that they need to upsize that line, you're going to replace the upsize of sanitary line on Seastone?
Yeah, that would be required for us to even, to even start construction. We, we won't be able to start construction without having a permit from, from Raleigh Water. So I can say with confidence that the first good bit of sewer run, we won't be triggering any up sizing, just knowing that we're, 1010 Road is a, is a ridge line. And so we're on the upstream end of the basin. So it'll, if we are triggering any upsize needs, it would happen much further downstream, which requires a, a pretty substantial basin study that at this point in time, we haven't done. But if, if, if it is triggered, then that'll be, it will be non-negotiable. It'll be something that would have to be done as part of the project.
Okay, one other question. Is this going to be a phased development? Because it has here, Canacus Road is future road. That looks to be a pretty significant street to the west of the Stormwater Basin. So it leads one to believe that this is going to be a phased development, but it, that's the only street that is shown as future.
So right now, our anticipation is that this will be two separate phases. And, you know, as I mentioned, given the conditions that we have associated with the case, we'll be coming off of 1010 Road. And so the first phases will be closest to 1010 Road as you make your way back. And where that split falls, we, we don't know yet, but it would be generally speaking, two phases of development.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions at the moment, we have opportunity for the public, if there are any comments or against.
Thank you.
That you'd like to speak. This is the time for us to have that conversation and limit our time to our 10 minute timeframe. So if there's. our time to our 10-minute timeframe. So if there's anyone that'd like to speak for the project, against the project, send any feedback. Okay, so do we have additional questions for staff and/or for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the language. Um, in, in our staff report, under land use and community chara- character criteria, there's a sentence, "To address the non-support gradings, the proposal should consider integrating Green Street Solutions and seeking improved access management for the corridor." I don't understand the last phrasing, "seeking improved access management for the corridor." What corridor? What's the corridor?
Microphone? Okay, there we go. Um, the corridor, that was referenced, um, to the 1010, um, corridor and regarding the, uh, lack of road frontage improvements and how, you know, with those improvements, it could, um, impact the access on that corridor from the site in and out of the site.
Okay, so it reads to me like it's a qualification that the, the 1010 improvements and widening and so on, and, and access, and all of that stuff needs to be done so that, so that the staff still finds this consistent, correct? Is that what that language more or less means?
Yes, it's, it's one aspect of it, of the consistency that, um, and that's a criteria from the comprehensive plan, um, that corridor access, um, and improving that if they are, and they are addressing the, um, the corridor improvements through their condition and now through a development agreement, that that would improve, uh, their scoring if that were to occur. Um, and so, right, it didn't score as well because that isn't something that is, um, for certain at this time. So it didn't get a, a, a positive rating, um, because there are still questions about that.
Okay. Uh, great answers. So there is that contingency that that will all get done or agreed to legally?
Right now, there are steps to address it. Um, so it's still, you know, it's contingent upon right-of-way acquisition, as the applicant has stated. They're in, in communication with the, uh, property owners as well as the, uh, the, uh, development agreement and the talks with the town and entering into a development agreement. So there are efforts to address it. It's just not 100% given at the time that this was proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
Got a couple, uh, comments here. Um, I like the proposed development being single-family as opposed to the previous iteration that was townhomes. Um, I appreciate the amenity center and the different amenities you're going to have there. Um, the, I, I like the proposed facades and the concept elevations and, and increasing the setback substantially, I guess, but I, I still find six feet is very narrow. Um, but it's better than three feet. Having said that, I've got a lot of concerns. Um, 1010 Road, under the zoning context here, is a major east-west connector. And they're going to be putting on there, on average, anticipated another 1,340 vehicles per day. On a road that's already congested, that leads to a road at 1010 and 401 that is a type F, uh, rated intersection by DOT, that's only going to make it worse. Um, I appreciate what your modeling says, that on Old Stage Road, you're going to have an 11-foot difference in the queue length and 1010, 13 feet. Modeling can tell you wonderful things. Common sense is telling me that, um, this is being designed to a minimum, and adding 1,340 vehicles a day is going to have a much greater difference on the queue length than what your modeling is showing. That's just common sense, but your model shows what it shows. Um, there is, a- a- and this frustrates me in a lot of different projects. This is being developed to meet minimum standards. So you got your level of service is basically D or better. But that's the minimum level of service. Nobody seems to want to go, we're going to make this better than the minimum. We've got 1010 Road where you're proposing to do a 50-foot storage lane, right and left, which I don't feel sufficient, but it is the minimum, again. Uh, the fact that this property is converting rural, current rural zoning to our four, uh, we're losing a good amount of rural land here. Uh, you've got current developments on two sides that are somewhat compatible, I believe, to this proposed development, but you have development on the other two sides that I don't feel are compatible. And you have only one access point to and from 1010 Road. I, I just, most of your traffic in there, I know they could go through Seastone Street and then go on over to Old Stage Road, but I think most of your traffic is going to flow and come out of 1010, which is my point of exacerbating the, the traffic that's already there on a two-lane road. Um, I just, a lot of this is to the minimums, and, you know, we've got the design for the detention system at 110 and 25. Again, the, the minimum. And I know 100 might be a stretch, and you said you're looking at 50, but that hasn't been determined yet. Um, I'm concerned that, again, going back to this very irregular piece of property, um, that it is squeezed in there, as, as Mr. Voilant had stated earlier, um, it, it's, it's infill. It's, it's just an odd, odd dimension. It's an odd plan, I think, in, in my, in my thoughts. Um, the fact that there hasn't been a study yet off-site, there has been onsite to the tie-in point, but nothing after that, that there hasn't been an official determination on compatibility, uh, with the existing infrastructure off-site. And yet, we're being asked to rezon this piece of rural property, and we don't have all the answers. Um, the lack of the right-of-way acquisition that we're working on it may happen, it's got to happen, but it's not part of this. Um, I, I just feel that it's, it's, there's a lot of unanswered questions. Um, I'm just looking through my notes here because I've been writing notes down. Um, and I've been going back to the, uh, item seven that is being worked on. Um, I, I think that's kind of the, the basis of my concern is just the, the one access on 1010, the kind of landlocked development, um, everything being designed to the minimum, and, and lack of really knowing what is downstream. Um, and that, that's a pretty intensive study if they go to look at that. Um, I just, I'm concerned about putting that much more traffic on 1010 Road, taking from a level D, level of service D as designed, and putting it over to a level F that's already down the road. I, I, I have issues with that, but that's all my comments at this time, and I'll let somebody else talk.
Back?
Yeah, I think the tr- the traffic is a big concern, uh, for me as well, driving up and down 1010 Road at times in the morning or late in the afternoon. It's, the space is, is not there. Uh, but I do applaud the open space, the amenities in the community for the residents, for sure. I think that's missing in a lot of the neighborhoods.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I'll just make one last comment. Um, I thought the, uh, trail system around the SCM, having that as amenity is a cool design. I applaud you for that, and even the, you know, boardwalk over the stream, um, too, as well. Um, but, uh, I'll just keep echoing, for me, it's the, for me, it's the traffic that's hard to overcome, putting that on there, um, the extra cars. And the way it's configured now on, uh, this concept plan for 1010, it's, I don't think it's going to improve anything. I think it could be a better design on 1010, um, but, um, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Um, similar thoughts. I mean, I like some of the, like the homes, um, I like the setback, six feet, definitely. I mean, they're still close together, but plain improvement from three, um, the active space. My, again, I piggyback on what the others have commented about the traffic. I've lived near that area, and both Old Stage and 1010 are terrible, um, especially if you are trying to turn into Eagle Ridge, going, turning left, same on 1010, or trying to turn out of there. Um, it's not safe at best. Um, and yeah, don't, and I would like, my concern too is with the acquisition for the right-of-way in the future, that this is not part of the plan now. Um, and I think that leads into this odd configuration for the neighborhood. Um, I think if there were different access points, different layout, um, maybe better suited, and maybe if there were additional conversations in the future about what the, um, owners would like to do with the remaining property and what that would look like, maybe I'd have different thoughts about it. Um, but right now, just have some concerns with how this is configured and what that might mean down the road to about acquiring the needed land or additional roadway.
And I'll just say one thing. So, you know, to echo off of what's been said, I do like the elevations. I do like, um, the amenities and, um, the way everything is structured here. Um, and I do understand everyone's concerns. I do just want to say, just because I say it, I think about every time, it seems like, um, the common concern is traffic, um, whether it's us or what we're hearing from the community. So I really, really think that Garner should, you know, we should all be trying to work together to either have public transportation or build, um, more walkable communities. Um, just want to say that again for the record. Um, but I definitely understand the traffic concerns.
Um, thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, I, I have a few comments, and then probably a couple of questions, probably one question for staff. May, maybe I'll ask that question for staff first. Um, the cul-de-sac at Hurst Drive that you mentioned is currently not in conformity, right? And that that would have to be improved, um, to a nine-foot diameter?
Right, so, um, it's, it's non-conform, conforming on several levels. The fire code, um, it, the diameter is less than the minimum of what, um, would be required, um, for today. And so that cul-de-sac was always intended to be a temporary, um, dead end. It never was intended for a permanent dead end. So, um, this, so that it needs to be rectified, that non-conformity, when there is an opportunity, uh, with a proposed subdivision to rectify that, that non-conformity.
So with, uh, with existing houses near that cul-de-sac, how would that?
So it actually exists in a temporary easement on those two properties. Um, so it actually, the, the pavement you see goes outside of the right-of-way. So i- if this had developed under the county, it would work the same way, where the developer who comes in on the adjacent property, who the stub is, it's there for their benefit. That's why it was provided. Um, they have to go back in then and take that pavement out, put whatever finish back, um, to create the regular street cross-section. Um, and then the temporary easement goes away, and the folks get their property back in full.
Okay. Um, and then so the, so the new cul, the new, uh, um, roundabout that's very adjacent to that, how, 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 how would that really work? I mean, no one's turning around in the cul-de-sac and then going into the new development and then turning back around, since it's all one way in, right?
So it's, e- e- essentially, you have one leg of a roundabout that is only accessible from one direction. It's channelized, so there's an effect, a pork chop kind of effect. Um, so that if you're, you know, if you're coming out of, um, Waterfield, you can actually get into the circle, but if you're coming from this subdivision and you're going into the circle, you would not be able to exit, right?
There've been very few, there've been very few, um, projects that I've seen that kind of, that, that type of, um, connected.
So we've, we've, it's something that staff has had to come up with, um, in response to several projects around town, um, as a way to meet, partially meet, um, concerns of citizens about cut-through traffic, um, but also maintaining, uh, meeting the UDO for that connection to be made, um, and therefore, you know, emergency services, and to a certain degree, other, other delivery services that in today's day and age, so many of us depend on.
So here's a random question. I don't even know if this, maybe not makes any, make any difference. Like, would a fire truck, would, would a fire truck potentially not turn around in that cul-de-sac and turn around in the, in the roundabout and then go back in for an emergency the wrong way, in the case of an emergency?
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's designed to allow for that. Yeah. Whether it's, they might use a mountable curb or something to that effect, so, but that's, yeah. It's not supposed to be for everybody.
Got it.
Um, but for the, the vehicles that have to, they can.
Okay. Um, okay, so this question is for the applicant. The existing mail kiosk is located on the more northern side, northeastern side of the site, and not centralized, not really centralized, perhaps at the main amenity area. Is that right? There's only one mail kiosk?
Yes.
For all 134?
That's right. That's, yeah, that's right. That's located in the northeastern section of the site.
Is there a reason why it's not more centrally located? And?
Have, uh, just had better success in the design of their communities in separating the two, just in terms of who is using what and parking for the amenity, for people who happen to be driving to the amenity. And so they've had just, they've had better success kind of divorcing those two concepts, the mail kiosk versus the primary amenity.
So if someone was driving to the main amenity, where would they park? Just a small parking?
Yeah, there's going to be some small, a small parking field kind of, and we haven't, that's, that'll be a separate site plan associated with that, so that's not before you tonight, but there will be some guest parking associated with that at the time. And, and the design of this, as you can see where the, where the kiosk is, recognizing that we believe the primary, um, most people will be coming to the site, kind of off of 1010 Road, they'll be able to duck in, get their, get their mail, and if they live in this portion of the community, it's, it's, it's basically like driving by the kiosk. That's, that's why it is situated there, is that, is to capture people as they're coming off of 1010 Road.
But they have to turn back, they have to, they have to turn around and come back in to then go back onto their street. So it's not really driving by?
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, there's, there's kind of a drive. Yeah, I mean, as you can see, there's, there's kind of a drive-in. So the idea is to kind of create this loop.
Yeah, I, I, I see that, but it's not like I'm, I'm, I'm literally driving by the kiosk and then continuing and turning into my street.
Yeah, that's right.
You have to go back in, turn back around and come back in and turn onto that Street C. And so the, I know that I have a site plan and we're not looking at that, but the potential parking at the main amenity area that would be at max, what would that, any idea? And you're saying it's also guest and amenity parking?
Yeah, it would be visitor parking. Like eight spaces.
And so the cross-section for the street is including for parallel parking or no parallel parking on the street? So it's a two-lane?
Yeah, and, and, and the details associated with how parking's going to work for the, for the amenity, you know, haven't been worked out at this time. I mean, the, they won't be teeing into, there won't be a parking field coming off of the street. It's, you know, it's a, it's a public street. And so that'll be accommodated kind of on that parcel that you see there in the middle.
So I'm assuming that the driveways for the units, for the houses would have enough storage for more than two cars in the driveway? Outside of the car, outside of the garage?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so there'll be two-car garages. So there'll be a two-car garage plus a two-part, you know, cars can park in front of the garage, so. And then some car, some, some of the units will have three-car garages as well.
But the guests to someone's house would, you would?
Ostensibly would be parking in the parking apron in front of the garage, yeah.
And would that potentially impact the sidewalk?
No, 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 that's designed to be outside of the sidewalk.
So there's no parking, kind of parallel parking besides the eight spots that may be used for the?
Right, yeah, this is, you know, as a single-family detached community, you have a lot less of that kind of curbside parking than you would on, say, like a town home with one-car garages.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. But you do have, I mean, you do have guests, you do have guests that come to this.
Sure, absolutely.
So by the time the guests are in the eight spaces, there are no more guest spaces but the? And you can't park in someone else's driveway unless they give you permission to do such.
It's round the pond.
So that, that's kind of a, that's somewhat problematic for me to, you know, provide guests to be able to do that. And then if, you know, you should be able to park in the driveway, hopefully. So you, you mentioned a lot of similarities to Georgia's Landing.
From a architectural standpoint.
But what about the similarities to Eagle?
To Eagle Ridge? Yeah, I mean, similar, I mean, Eagle Ridge was built a while ago. And so from an architectural standpoint, this community will, will be distinct from Eagle Ridge. I mean, not vastly distinct, but this is newer architecture, it's a newer design. When I said, you know, complimentary to Eagle Ridge, it was really just kind of designed around lot size and the sizes of the homes themselves, less about architecture. This architecture will be different than what's in Eagle Ridge, just recognizing the times have changed with respect to people's interest and appetite in the style of homes that are being built.
Seems all very monotone to me, but I'm not getting into like the design elements and color patterns. But I think some of the, the kind of, the housing unit sizes and types definitely doesn't seem like it's giving us enough range. That does kind of seem a bit problematic for me in a way. The last thing, well, two last things. I also have a concern about the traffic. And I have a real concern about this one entry access point from, from 1010 Road. And the potential for the one-way in from Old Stage Road through Whitecroft. And I know that you mentioned the traffic count. But knowing what that, knowing what the traffic looks like on Old Stage Road at peak times. I mean, it's backed up a good amount going north, I mean, coming south on Old Stage at the end of the day. And then, as Mr. Mills mentioned, you know, turning in, and I think also, I think everybody's kind of doing something similar to that. Thanks. Turning in from Old Stage into a one-way in. Is, to me, feeling that there are going to be additional pass-through traffic one way getting into the new neighborhood? I mean, do we not?
Additional pass-through traffic from?
From Old Stage.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we can't control, again, this, you talk about the connection to Hurst?
Uh, I am, yes, yes, coming into Whitecroft and then turning onto Hurst Drive and then going into one-way in.
Yes, and again, as a, as a UDO-required connection, we have to make the connection.
That, that, that.
And what we have, you know, what we've done is what we have the ability to control. You know, we obviously can't control folks who are going to hop off Old Stage and are going to drive through that community to come through our development. And, you know, and I, I, it's unfortunate for that community, but that's, you know, that is stubbed there. It's contemplated for future connection, it's always been contemplated for future connection. I would point out that we're at the, you know, the far low end of the density recommendation for this neighborhood recommend. I mean, two and a half units to the acre is pretty low, all things considered, given the style. You know, I, I understand very, very well the concerns associated with traffic. We actually think by providing the connection we have out to 1010, as well as the connection to Eagle Ridge, and Mr. Jefferson, the one way that you point out, it's actually, it stands to be able to alleviate some of the burdens that folks were in Eagle Ridge, for instance, right now. If they want to be able to make their way out to 401 and 1010, they've got to go out to Old Stage, take a right, hit the Old Stage and 1010 Road, and then take a right. They'll have an alternative now. They'll be able to go directly out to 1010. So it cuts off traffic on Old Stage as well as traffic at that intersection. The same is true, as you note, for people who are going to be cutting through that, the, the, the Whitestone neighborhood. Again, that's unfortunate from a cut-through standpoint, but that's why those, that's why the code requirements exist. It's not only for emergency access, it's providing multiple points. And so we believe it will, in, in some small respect, there's a, there's a lot of traffic volume out there, right? I mean, our 138 homes, we recognize will make an impact. You know, it's over a thousand homes a day, in the peak hour, it's significantly less than that, right? There's a lot of traffic and there's always traffic out there, I'm not disputing that at all whatsoever. But we think with the additional connectivity that this community is providing, it will help in some ways to provide alternatives that people don't have right now. People who live in Eagle Ridge, the traffic is already bad, they've got no choice right now. They've got to go out to Old Stage, they've got to go down to 1010.
With that, I agree with that assessment. So you're, so you potentially are bringing more traffic into this development.
So, I thought that there was another, is South Mountain Drive not go from Eagle Ridge onto 1010?
It's, it's further to the west and it's, it's a, for folks who live.
Still connected to Eagle Ridge.
It is, yes. And it's not on this screen and I would show you. But for folks who live kind of on Seastone, it would be, it's a very circuitous path to make your way out to 10, this, this 1010, this will provide a much more direct path. And I would, I would guess that folks who currently live on Seastone, who are trying to get out to 401 and 1010 at this point, are going out to Old Stage, taking a right. Just because even with all the traffic, it's still the fastest way to be able to get there. Yeah.
Okay, and then the layout, I, I think, I think, I think there's, I think another one more level or pass, I think, at the layout of the lot. Even some of the street organization for me in this, I think, also with the unknown potential not purchased property along the 1010 Road, the potential access for the connector, not knowing exactly what. If there were two access points, it'd be, it would, it would feel a little bit better. But I, I, I do have a concern about that. But you really think that our stormwater is not going to impact the, the new units with the stream that runs through currently? We really think that the location of the stormwater control measure is actually in the best location to support that.
I'm going to let the engineer answer that.
I'd love to kind of hear a little bit more about that. Since we have these two kind of major north-south streams and then some small fissures that connect off of that.
Yeah, so the existing drainage pattern, I mean, just naturally, all of the existing topo, you know, from, from the screen goes right to left, so from south to north, cardinal directions speaking. And so we, we have tried to do a good job of locating the proposed pond away from being basically on the, the doorstep of, of those existing homes. So I think, I think we've best located it based on the existing topo there is. And, yeah, like, like Jason said, we're still working on calculations of all the detailed calculations of, of the pond itself. But we're, we're held to, to requirements of detaining to, you know, pre and post-development to, to help with mitigating any, any impact, so.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Questions for staff, questions for the applicant?
I have one more question. You were saying that this would be a two-phase development with the main amenity being off of the future road. Is that main amenity not going to be part of the first phase?
The amenity will be part of the first phase.
And so, well, how would you access it? If it, if that road is not part, is that road going to be part of the first phase?
It's going to have to be again, because they're only.
Okay, so just the buildings?
That's right.
Okay.
Coming up 1010, coming down and hitting the amenity, yep. And so it's, you know, just kind of looking at it, it's the bulk of the development kind of west of that primary road. Yeah, how much of that ends up? And we don't know the exact breakdown in the numbers between Phase One and Phase Two. But as you work your way west, that's, that's the way that's working. But that, that amenity in that kind of spine street will be part of that first phase of the development. That's, that's the anticipation.
Okay. I think the vision is that in parentheses, it says future. So it makes it seem like it's not part of that first.
Understood.
Okay.
Any other discussion? In order for us to have more discussion to make some decisions, is there any motion for us to review? In your packet, there's a recommendation of a motion. And if that motion does not fit where you all feel, you can amend that, adjust it. Or we can review the proposed amendment and vote and discuss that in other way.
Here's where I'm at. I don't feel I can say it's consistent because there are some contingencies I'd like to see resolved first. And the same way, I, I can't say it's inconsistent because I know that those, those consistence, contingencies are being worked on. So that, that tells me that this is a temporal matter, we're just not ready. And if we're not ready, is there a way, Jeff, to table this for a later meeting? Maybe some of the legalities involving the 1010 corridor will be resolved by then and we'll all feel more comfortable about it? Just a question.
As, as a legislative matter, it is always within your purview to do a continuance. The only thing that is in the statutes that I'm aware of, and Town Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I have this right, is that if the petitioner were to go to the council, there is a 60-day time period where if the council wanted to, and it would be up to them, that they could pull the case from you without a recommendation. But there is that 60-day clock within which you have to operate.
Okay, is, I would make a motion that we have a continuance of this. That we, if there's no better word for it, table it and wait for some of these issues to be resolved and then reconsider. I don't know how to word that, Jeff, motion-wise.
You could just make a, make a motion to continue this matter to your next meeting in October.
I'll make a motion that we continue to consider this matter at the next meeting in October.
Okay, we have a motion to, to continue this case to the October meeting per some of the undecided and non-completed items.
Some of the contingencies might be resolved by that point in time, so we should.
All right, so that's our motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion?
So wait, I'm sorry, are the contingencies are the access points?
Mainly related to the 1010 corridor work, whether an agreement can be reached with the property owners. That's my concern.
I, I have a few other concerns that, on top of what Mr. Boylan said, was a lot of the level of service being designed to the minimum. The detention system not exceeding a 25-year flood. And the unknown status of off-site sewers. I, I think there's a few more things that concern me on top of what Mr. Boylan voiced.
So this motion would, would likely include those things, those items that are not finalized at this point, correct? Or do we need to specify?
The only thing that I will say about some of those items is that some of them are not under our control. You know, Level of Service D is a DOT standard. The UDO specifically only says the 25-year storm. So unless there's specific really reasons, I, you know, you can, you can cite those, but there may or may not be any change to those.
Well, I'm not sure the developer will be able to get the right-of-way property for 30 days for next meeting. I don't know if that's feasible or not. Just because that's a long process to close on the deal and stuff like that. So I'm not sure we'll actually see the right-of-way in hand or dedicated by the next meeting. Just don't know if that's feasible. So I think personally, we may have to kind of also keep that in mind, make the decision.
All right, I had to look up a few things, but it's actually 30 days.
30 days, thank you.
Not 60 days, so it's likely that you're already going to be past that time. So Town Council could take it up without your recommendation.
Now, whether they're likely to do that, we don't know.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, we wouldn't press for the council to do anything with the case without you all's recommendation. And having heard this feedback, I think we would be inclined to have the case table for 30 days to work on some of those things. And while we might not be able to acquire the property within 30 days, I think there are other things that we may be able to do between now and then to help provide better predictability associated with those drainage improvements. We think we can take a look at stormwater as well as the sewer side of the equation. And I think, Mr. Carson, you raised good questions and we could talk to the City of Raleigh. As Mr. Williamson noted, City of Raleigh kind of controls that, that, that side of the equation, but we're happy to have that conversation. So I do think there are things that you all have questions to, that we've heard for the first time tonight, that I think we can work on for the next 30 days if you're inclined to table the case. We, we would be happy to accept a table and work on those items with you.
Thanks for the motion. It's on the floor to continue this case to our October meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to consider this at the next meeting in October for contingencies to be addressed. And I will call the vote. Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Nay.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Boyland?
Aye.
That's six ayes, the motion to continue passes.
Thank you so much. We have approved that motion. Thank you so much, Commission. Thank you applicants for the information you provided for us. We look forward to seeing what you might be able to share with us at our next meeting. Look at it with fresh eyes again. Thank you so much. We are now at the time for reports from our planning director.
Yes.
Activities since your last meeting in August, which was on the 11th. Not a lot of things moving through the system right now. Mostly just some annexations of past projects and a couple for a few individual lots. One on Vanessa Drive and a couple on Buffalo Road were approved by the council. The Bennett Assemblage Project out on 401 was the bigger of the annexations that took place. That's a project that was probably went through Planning Commission maybe two years ago already. So it's it's been a while. The Creech Road Homes Project went back to council and that was approved. Would encourage you, if you did not have the opportunity, to either attend or listen to either the August 26th work session or the September 2 council meeting. At the work session on October 26th, there were presentations on the Wake Transit Plan and where we are right now, kind of a status update with the plan. So if you're interested in transit, definitely encourage you to listen into that presentation from from Campo. Then staff from Wake Med were also here that night to give an update to the council on the Wake Med Whole Health Campus, coming up at Timber Drive and 70 there across from White Oak Shopping Center. Also, there was also a presentation related to affordable housing from Central Pines Regional Council. They had been putting together some data for the town. So if any of those topics interest you, would encourage you to tune into the August 26th meeting. And then on September 2nd, we also received an update from the Turnpike Authority on the 540 Project, the completion from Garner up to Knightdale. Let's see, the text amendment package that I've mentioned before, this will be our second package addressing trying to help implement some of the things in the comprehensive plan related to residential development, like projects that you debated about tonight. That will be going to the council. We'll be opening the public hearing next week at the council's regular meeting. At this point, staff is anticipating and asking for that to be continued, just because we need some additional time to finalize the graphics. If you're familiar with the U D O and you've looked at Article Five, where you have the drawings of how the buildings are laid out to the streets and where the driveways are and all that. We will be impacting those drawings with the changes to the text. But we do want to go ahead and have the public hearing, see if there's any public input and any additional council input before we go through that final effort to get those drawings finalized. So it's anticipated that we will be coming to you all in November with that, if things proceed as as planned. And then we are also targeting the September work session to hopefully have a draft contract for the transportation element for council to react to and give us any feedback. Hopefully getting that approved by council hopefully sometime in October. We do, in talking with the consulting team, there is a lot of data collection, particularly related to traffic. We are talking with them about using Streetlight. If you've heard of them, they are a big data company that taps into all of the data that is updating your traffic maps on your GPS. And so very, very current, real, timely data. So they're going to be doing a lot of number crunching on the front end once they are given the green light to go. And then we're looking at really ramping up the kind of the public involvement and all the committee work probably after the holidays. Just so that we can get through, get through those times and hopefully be able to engage everybody first thing come January. So if you do have any questions, concerns about where we are with that process, feel free to either send me or Julian Griffey an email or leave us a message. We'll be glad to talk to you about it. Do be thinking about, I may send an email to y'all. For those of you that were here for the clue process that led to our new comp plan, we did have a kind of committee of the whole where Planning Commission works side by side with council. Staff feels like that went pretty well, about as well as any kind of steering committee that I've that I've had and worked with before. So we're kind of inclined to go that, see about going that route again, if council is also interested. But may poll you on that to see if that's something that, you know, if if you all feel that you can commit the time to it. I don't think it was too onerous last time. This may be a little more compressed. But again, I wouldn't think it would probably be more than once a month, maybe. But just just be thinking about that or whether you'd like to just have appoint some representatives. That would be kind of the other option. And then the representatives could help bring the message back to the full board. So that is all that I have for y'all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Trezenberg, any, any, any point of commission?
Just to advise the Planning Commission, so the Affordable Housing Task Force had turned in their report to council earlier this year. And recently, we've been asked to, our staff has been asked to reconvene, I guess, the Affordable Housing Task Force to look at some questions and ideas, I guess, that council has put forth and our town manager and assistant town manager and legal have were waiting on schedule on how that's going to come together. But there's been requests for more input from the task force.
That's wonderful to see. That has not ended. We still have work to do. I appreciate your support on that and your representation. Any other? Well, I want to thank anyone that came out for the Celebrate Garner event and recognized our former commission members. It was great to see them there. So that was a wonderful event.
I agree. It was nice. My only complaint was I didn't get more time for food, but it was very good, good spread.
Yes, you had to be, you had to be kind of timed.
Well, yeah, you, hey, I at least got to eat. Next time I'll just bring Tupperware.
Well, if there is no other commentary, then we will call our meeting adjourned.